Mr. Mayor, we're ready in five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, and I declare this meeting open at 6:02 PM. We've just had some guests with us and we're going to have a little presentation. Well, we did have a presentation before we went live, but I'm hoping someone from Communities in Bloom will also be able to come forward and say a few words. We're really happy to have Communities in Bloom, the group with us, some of the representatives. They've done an outstanding job over many, many years planting trees, shrubs, doing a lot to beautify and green up Strathmore. And this summer, their efforts along with the efforts of our staff, our operations team, many, many people in the communications area as well. We are very, very excited and happy to announce that Strathmore has received the Five Blooms Award for 2022. So I'm wondering if we could have someone from Communities in Bloom coming forward to the podium and if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to the at-home audience, of which I'm one for a change. And this is Coca-Cola, by the way.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here with my co-chair, Lisa Sater. My name's Jen Newfeldt, and we're excited to present this award. Yes. To Council this evening and to the town. So the motto of Communities in Bloom is "Growing Great Places Together", and I think that we can honestly say that we are fully behind that and excited about that. On August 4th, we were privileged to tour the judges through the town. We started out here at Town Hall and began our tour of the, with a tour of the Healing Garden, recognizing our connections to our Indigenous friends. We were joined by the community investment folks from Fortis, who are sponsors of Communities in Bloom provincially. And conveniently, the Fortis bench was on the way, so we had a quick look at that, on the way to Station Gardens at Lampard Park, where Rob Peary, our former chair, was describing the history of Strathmore. We saw the community gardens at the library and then went on to see the WID canals in Aspen. As we drove around town, we pointed out the various projects that CIB has worked on or partnered with on. We enjoyed a lovely lunch at the Kleiber Barn, where Bruce gave a presentation on the demonstration farm that was there many years ago and of the plans and the works for the future. After lunch, we popped over to the solar farm to hear about the project going on there, including the goats that are grazing underneath the solar panels. Other highlights on the tour included the Pollinator Garden and Wildflower, various community gardens at different schools around town, the joint project, that is, the Strathmore Motorsports Center and George Freeman School, a few residential yards that were recognized last summer, the high school greenhouse, and we wrapped up the day with an amazing dinner at the Legion Hall with many of our supporters and friends. We finally did it. We won our provincial championship. Like all victories, it is never due to just one event and one day. The reason we won this award is due to the hard work of this committee now and in the past. It is due to Town Council, who has supported us, and is due to the town staff, who have worked so hard with us. We thank you all for your contributions over the years. Our Parks Department has worked tirelessly with us, doing all the maintenance and collaborating on various parks and projects. We appreciate you. Our profile book was acknowledged as outstanding by the judges. We are confident it was the best in the province and will serve as a great community promotional publication. If you guys haven't had a chance to look at it, it's available online as well. Thank you to the Town's communication folks for their tremendous work on that. Our numerous partnerships were specifically recognized by the provincial Communities in Bloom through Alberta Recreation and Parks Association. Special thanks goes to the Town Council, Town Staff, Donna, Deanna, Jeff and Scott, Strathmore FCSS with Melissa, Connect First Credit Union, Eagle Lake Nurseries, Hope Covenant Church, the Strathmore Lions, the Western District Historical Society, Legacy Farm with Bruce Kleiber, Western Irrigation District with Dan Shute, Ducks Unlimited with Derek Halgrimson, Strathmore Legion, The Vault, the Community Greenhouse at Strathmore High School with Cole Hints, Strathmore Times and Strathmore Now, Country 104.5. There are many community members that encourage and support our work as well through kind words on our social media. So we are presenting this framed award to the Town and Council and requesting that it be put in the public spot for the, in the Town Office for a few months. And everyone is welcome to use our Winning Five Blooms in promoting our community to others. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the work that you've done. One of the things I would love to say, like to say is that our town motto is Rural Reimagined, and you folks over the several years that you've been in operation have been reimagining Strathmore as a more green, sustainable town with beautiful trees and shrubs, so we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Yes.
What's next?
National.
And we're open for suggestions from you guys, what you think, where we should be going as a community.
One of the things that I hear from people in community, your orchards, you know, that where people can pick and, you know, they're so appreciative of that. And I heard today about, learned a little bit more about edible pathways. And thought that was such a neat, especially when schools were, you know, in joint projects with schools and different schools in the community adopted a pathway to do edible pathways under the guidance. And I thought Communities in Bloom would be a great leader for that project. But I really, I'm so appreciative of everything you've accomplished and what you bring to the community and you help keep us on track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments from the council? And can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you.
If you.
Counselor Mitzner?
If you guys are open to, we could use some blooms and some blossoms on the highway frontage when you're coming into Strathmore. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Mitzner. That's a very good idea. We definitely want to make the Trans-Canada and those businesses be a real attraction point for the many travelers that go east and west on the Trans-Canada. Any other comments from councilors? Seeing none, thank you, Lisa and Jen, and your whole group for everything you've done. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, everyone. And for those watching at home, I know there's about 16, maybe 17 people watching at home. I just wanted to clarify, I am, I am chairing the meeting from an undisclosed, undisclosed location in a bunker that's been hermetically sealed. I just wanted to let everyone know, my wife Debbie has COVID after more than two and a half years, and she's been very ill, so I've been trying to look after her as well as a little bit of the housework, but I thought it'd be safe to stay home and do the meeting from here as opposed to possibly risking anyone else at the council chambers. So at this time, I'll move on to confirming the agenda. Are there any items from any of the councilors as far as emergent items for tonight's agenda? And seeing none, Administration, Jonathan?
Thank you, Worship. Administration has no requests to amend the agenda today.
Thank you. And I had one that I wanted to present, Jonathan. Do you have that one handy? I think this is one that's, that's being brought forward on the same night of a meeting, so it may need a vote and a simple majority, I believe, is what we would need to add it to the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe the in-camera item, it would be 7.3 community grants. Disclosure harmful to personal privacy, FOIP Section 17-1.
Thank you. And Council, I just want to reassure you, it's just, it's a simple matter, but it's something that probably shouldn't be discussed in the public eye at this time. But it's a, it's a very simple one, one item. So would someone be prepared to make that motion to have Deputy Mayor Peterson first?
Your Worship, I would move confirmation of the October 12th, 2022 Committee of the Whole agenda as amended.
Thank you for that. I'll call a motion, all in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. We have no delegations tonight, and we were glad to have Communities in Bloom earlier. That brings us to Item 4, Confirmation of Minutes. 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for September 14th, 2022.
I can move those minutes as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. You've all heard the motion, all in favor. And that motion is carried. That brings us to Item 5, Business. And Council, since this is kind of a hybrid meeting and the chair is zooming in, because my screen will show you when you speak and if councilors come to present, I may not see all of you well in case you want to have a question. So for tonight only, as far as me chairing legislative services, and I thought it would be good if you have questions for each presenter, if we could wait till they're done their presentation, and then it's easier for me to see your hands when you want to, when you want to ask a question as opposed to a split screen and maybe I lose some of you. Does that sound all right for everyone? Okay, seeing no, hearing no complaints. That brings us to 5.1, Memorial Tree and Bench Purchasing Policy Update. And I believe Donna McCallum is speaking to this one. Good evening, Donna. Welcome. And again, thank you to your staff, to you for all the efforts you've made and you, and you did make in 2022. We did this a few years ago and now to come off COVID and have a lot of new staff and you all just jumped in and did a great deal to make the Five Blooms Award become a success for Strathmore. So thank you, thank you, staff. Thank you to a lot of the staff in the, in the communications and events area as well, and it's turned out really well for Strathmore.
Thank you. And we have an amazing team, I think. So, thank you. Good evening, your worship and council. This evening, I brought forward the Memorial Tree and Bench Policy Update. The last time this policy was updated is in 2017. I just want to give you an overview of some of the updates that we're proposing. And one of the key factors of this is better, to better reflect the costs of the actual program. Sorry, just give me a second here. So basically, what we're, we are proposing is to update the policy and as the prices have increased for the benches, the concrete, and for the trees, we're proposing to remove the set prices from the policy and we're recommending that the donor pays the full price for the cost of the bench or the tree, the concrete base in the case of a bench, and plus all the plaques that go with the memorialization of the tree or the bench. As the costs often change, the process would be simpler if we do remove those from the fee bylaw and ensure that the, the program is sustainable. The one thing that we've included in this is we've got defined timelines when we'll do installations of trees and benches and what, as well as procedures that if the bench or the tree needs to be removed. I've included in this, in this presentation, the redline version of the policy, which I don't know if you had a chance to review it, there is a number of changes in it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Donna. Counsel, I can see you all now. Are there any questions for Donna? And for my help, yeah, if you could raise your hands, because I can't see the red lights very well. So I think I have Counselor Wiley first, and then Counselor Montgomery, did you go towards your mate? So yeah, if you guys could put your hands up and then I'll be able to see you easier. Counselor Wiley, thanks. Thanks very much, Jason. Yeah, wave a little. Okay, Counselor Wiley and then Counselor Montgomery, thank you.
So, just to walk me through the steps here, so the donor would phone the town and they would inquire about it. At what point in the process would they be informed of the cost? Would they know right away?
Right away. We generally get quotes right off the beginning of the season of a memorial bench and then the suppliers of the trees always send us a catalog.
And, thank you. And my second question would be, would it make sense to also include at least a small amount for administrative costs?
You know, we did talk about that. It's, it's really minimal, the administrative cost that goes into it. Like the time that my administrative assistant spends on it is actually quite minimal. It's basically accepting the application, making the phone call, and then the rest of it is the operations team doing the rest of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. Can you ballpark, like, right now, what you think it would cost for a bench?
So on average, including with the concrete and the memorial bench, depending on the style, is anywhere between $3,000 to $5,000. And the plaque, sorry, that also includes the plaque and the installation.
Okay. And like, there's multiple styles of bench, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Have, like, was there consideration to, like, towards just bulk purchasing, like 10 or 15 benches or something like that, so that we can have an idea of the fixed cost?
Sorry, can you repeat that question?
Well, I'm just wondering if, like, did you guys consider, like, just maybe buying, like, 10 or 15 benches?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And actually, the other thing we've thought about is pre-installing some benches, which there already is. If you walk along the irrigation canal, you'll see that there are some benches already installed without plaques. So when donors do put in an application, we offer that to them first. And then basically, they just pay for the plaque installation, because we took it out of the capital budget for benches and tables, which is already a consistent request of council in every, every year, basically.
Okay, good. Yeah, you're way ahead of me then. And is it, like, you just contract out the concrete or something?
The concrete, yes. The concrete is contracted out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
And I will just mention the other thing, we've had some requests for tables as well. And just so it's economical for the donors, what we'll do is instead of purchasing a whole brand-new table, we just purchase the tabletop. And then it's a little bit, it's not as expensive.
Counselor Mitzner?
Are these location-specific? Does the town tell them where they can go?
We give preferred locations, but the donors also do have specific requests where they would like them to go. So generally, what we'll do is we'll go to the site and meet with the donor. And, you know, we just have, our considerations are that it's not going to impede our snow clearing on the pathways and we just make sure it's a good location for everybody and usually it works out. We haven't had to tell anybody no for a location. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitzner. Any other questions for Donna? Seeing none, thank you again, Donna, for your presentation and information you've provided tonight.
Thank you.
That brings us to Item 5.2, Garden Suite Survey Results. Good evening. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to the at-home audience, that would be great.
Good evening, your worship, members of council and audience. I am Megan Williams, Planner 3 for the Town of Strathmore. So before I dive into the survey results, I'll just give you a brief reminder of what garden suites are. So they are a second dwelling unit on a parcel, typically in the rear yard in a building separate from the primary dwelling. Garden suites are typically single-floor, either at grade or on the second story above a garage. I've also seen them called accessory dwelling units, laneway houses, in-law suites, and backyard suites. So just for ease, I'm just going to be calling them all garden suites as an umbrella term. So Administration released the survey in July and notified residents via social media, the utility inserts Strathmore Times, and by hand-delivering flyers to apartment buildings. So a huge thank you to our Communications Department for all of their help with the, with the survey. It's really appreciated. So the questions that we posed in the survey were intended to help us learn what Strathmore residents, how they feel about garden suites, and how they feel about different aspects of garden suites. We do plan to take this information to inform any amendments to the land use bylaw. We received an incredible 257 responses to the survey, the majority of which were in favor of seeing garden suites within their neighborhood. So the survey looked at sizing, parking, access to density, massing, and neighborhood character in relation to garden suites. Full review of the responses can be found in the report provided to council. I will touch on just a couple of questions to provide some visuals and to create context to show the effects of the potential regulations. So there were questions on access and parking. So the slide that I have up here shows, it gives a straight and aerial view of the garden suites in Strathmore. Those are the first, the top two photos there. So you can see that, what it would look like if the garden suites were required to have driveway access. The photo on the bottom shows the garden suite without the driveway access, but that parking is provided still on the lot from the primary houses dwelling, or driveway, rather. This one shows how the garden suite may look with laneway access and gives an idea of what aspect of massing could be controlled. So you can see the suite is set back from the laneway. The windows are oriented away from the adjacent yards. The building itself is in line with the other garages on the lane. And the sloping of the roof, you can see in the, I say back, but it's the part facing the yard, is enough that the impression is, it's a shorter building for the adjacent landowners. A number, as a number of municipalities capped garden suite sizes at 90 meters squared, Administration did ask respondents their opinion on this size limitation. We compared the 90 meters squared to six, six parking stalls in the survey. But I did some measurements in council chambers earlier and the 90 meters squared is actually from the doorway to the council table and almost to each side of it. So it's substantial. I'm still not, I still don't believe that that's 90 meters squared, but I went and compared to the six parking lots, the parking spots outside, and it, it matches up. It's a lot more space than you'd think, but I guess like when you start putting stuff in and putting walls up, the size, it gets a bit, it feels smaller, I guess. We just, what we asked is whether, whether folks wanted to see a cap, so the very maximum size of a garden suite would be 90 meters squared. I think that's 960 square feet. Thank you. Yeah, so. Pardon? It's big, a lot bigger than, yeah. So if council does direct Administration to amend the land use bylaw to open up garden suites to all of Strathmore, we will take the responses that were received in the survey as well as any feedback from internal departments and external agencies to inform our recommended amendments. So proposed amendments would control which land use districts the garden suites would be allowed in. And the proposed regulations would further control different aspects of garden suites, such as access, parking, massing, and landscaping. That does conclude my presentation, and if you have further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselor Mitzner?
So would this take in conversions for existing single and double detached garages?
That's a good question. It could, it, I don't know if it would explicitly prohibit those conversions. It is something that we could definitely take into consideration if it's a concern that council has about converting garages or...
And could there be also an option similar to Oketoks and Calgary where they could put a suite above the double garage?
I think that's, I think that's in the, in the survey as well. There were many questions about that. Megan, we were, I think we were looking at detached garages that could be carriage suites or garden suites and I think some of your photos in the, in the survey or in the document showed some, a couple of places in Canmore that, that had an upper.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Okay, and one more question. So the present zoning that we have over in Wild Rose, those are carriage houses with the two houses on one title that face on the cemetery? Was that a carriage house zoning? Was that an R2 zoning?
That's also a good question. I'd have to look up super quick. There's, they're basically under a direct control district, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I think, I think there were about six or seven homes that had the carriage, that had the second dwelling in the back. It was first brought in a council that came, that was before my first term, and I think it was about 2007 or 2008, somewhere in there that they, they brought that in. And I think you're right, Megan. It was a site-specific kind of a thing. They wanted to try something different.
Thank you.
Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you, Mr. Fuel. If I could make a suggestion or request, I would like to request that we not limit it to 90 meters squared. I think that it would probably be better just to follow the existing setbacks that we have. And the reason for that is, you know, like, a 40 by 25-foot unit would be 1,000 square feet, you know, and that's, that's not even that big. If somebody had like a, like a 75-foot wide lot, they wanted to do something that was, you know, 20 or 25 feet deep, that would obviously be a lot more than that. And I, I guess I don't really see... Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, can you maybe talk about why we might want to limit the size just as like a blanket mandate?
It's, it would basically add another control, like another control within our, in our books that we'd be able to use to make sure that the rear building isn't, like substantially, isn't the same size as the primary dwelling. But we can always change the verbiage, so verbiage, so that it's, it's not specifically that 90 meters squared. We could say, so long as it's a certain percentage of the primary dwelling. And of course, keeping in character with, with the rest of the residential, like neighborhood character, that kind of thing, right? We take that, all of that into consideration.
Okay. Yeah, like, I think, you know, it's probably one of these things that probably should be just reviewed on a case-by-case basis almost without having, because like, you know, property I'm thinking of, you know, like, there's already, you know, there's a garage that's bigger than the house right now. So there are instances where, you know, like, especially in an older neighborhood, there might be a small house, you know, and so, you know, creating a, a unit that's smaller than that might be kind of prohibitive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Mitzner?
I have one more question. Is this zoning-specific or is it property-specific? So it could happen in our 1, 2, or 3-zoned area?
It would, in essence, it would be both. So it would, we would say you can have a garden suite in A, B, and C land use districts. However, your property will also have to meet X, Y, and Z requirements. So like, you couldn't have, like, there would be setbacks that would be required, say we needed... If there was a requirement for a driveway to get in there, there would need to be space for the driveway to get to the backyard. If there were requirements that restricted it to places that did have a laneway access. So even though there are going to be lots within the R1 district, or sorry, there, there, so there will be lots that are zoned R1 that don't have a laneway access, so they technically wouldn't qualify to have a garden suite if we required laneway access, for example. Yeah, like this is, we don't have the, the regulations drafted yet. That's, it's just an example.
And when do you foresee this being an opportunity for Strathmore? 12 months, 24 months?
Next year, less than 12 months. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitzner. Counselor Wiley?
So this is super exciting and I'm hearing from the other council just a lot of positivity. The, the survey was resoundingly positive, so a couple of numbers really jumped out at me. Only 10% were against it. Well, first of all, 257 people filled it out. That's great. Only 10% were against it. 64% want them in their very neighborhood. Which, like, if you think about it, that isn't saying 64% are positive. I think the numbers were a lot higher. There were just some that were like reasonably, probably wouldn't work in my neighborhood. So I found the results really good, and I went through the comments and I put checkmarks next to all the ones that sounded positive to me. And it was resoundingly, like, the comments are just very positive. Like, so just on and on. So I'm really excited about this. I'm hoping that, like Jason's asking, there's going to be less red tape in it. I think it's a really good opportunity to fix some of the housing, or not for us to fix, but to just allow developers and individuals and families to fix some of the housing crisis that we have in our town. So I'm really, really looking forward to this. But again, probably less, less red tape. I wouldn't even go with, to make the garden suite a percentage of the house size. So for example, if my first house, I joked, was 1,000 square feet, well, if I'm living in that 1,000-square-foot house, we had a huge, huge backyard. If I was only allowed to make the garden suite 60% of that, that'd be a 600-square-foot house. Or 80% of that'd be an 800-square-foot house. So I think probably less, less rules, less rules the better. I just think probably some of the comments said something like, make sure they reflect the character of the neighborhood. the character of the neighborhood. And I think that's probably a very good way of, of saying it, so that the garden suite isn't detracting from the neighborhood, it's actually adding to the neighborhood. Thank you so much for bringing this forward to council.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. Megan, could I ask a question on the opposite side of it, is, would we ever consider bringing something forward to ensure there was, like, a minimum size that, so someone wasn't just converting a shed and saying, hey, I'm putting someone, someone in this building? Is there any protection for people? I know not too many people rush to rent that, but you never know.
We, we definitely could put a minimum requirement. We already have minimum requirements for, for some of our land use districts for dwelling size, in like our, in our higher-density ones. Our threes, I think, there's a minimum, minimum house size. Or like minimum square footage.
I know in Canmore, they've done this with a lot of detached garages, and, and Vancouver. Have there been any communities that have looked at or considered homes with attached garages? Could we see people trying to convert an attached garage with a driveway to a secondary suite?
I, I'm, honestly, I'm not sure. I've not seen, but...
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm just wondering, just kind of thinking out loud as far as what we might see people try to bring forward. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. I presume, like, we won't, we don't want, like, if somebody was doing, like, an on-grade one, we wouldn't want them to have a basement, right?
That's, that's something that we could regulate, it's, in all honesty...
Well, like, I'm wondering, yeah, I guess I'm wondering if, if you're suggesting, or if, or if, or if you see any issues with allowing people to, to have a basement in, in one of those, like, on-grade ones?
In all honesty, I've not seen anything about basements in the, in the garden suites. For the most part, what I've seen are at-grade or on the second floor above the garage. That's an interesting thought, though, if they have a basement or not.
Okay. Yeah, and as far as, like, the minimum size goes, I think that, like, I think I understand where, where the mayor's coming from, but, you know, like, one of the things that we've kind of tossed around a number of times is tiny homes. And, you know, if somebody wants to live in, like, a 200-square-foot, you know, unit, I, I don't personally think that we should be, you know, saying, hey, you can't do that or something like that. Again, like, I think it's one of these things that we should, you know, like, as Counselor Wiley said, you know, look, you know, like, it should be a case-by-case, like, you know, fits the neighborhood kind of thing. Yeah, you know, I, I think, yeah, I think the less stringent we are, the better, probably. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Any other questions for Megan? And Megan, I suppose you don't know when the first draft of a proposed bylaw might come our way?
I don't, I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. And, you know, it's, it's great that we're looking into this and that we're moving along the, the path of, of having some secondary suites, some garden suites. I think it's going to be something, as Counselor Wiley said, we have a real shortage of affordable, you know, good rental accommodations. So I think this is great that we're moving this way. Thank you, thank you very much for your presentation.
Megan's still here to present the development permit variance request. So we received an application for a townhouse that requires a variance over 25%. So the land use bylaw directs administration to refer these variance requests to council for decision. As it's been a number of years since the last development permit was brought to council, we're going to be taking this time to review the purpose of development permits and the process with you guys. So development permits are a legal document that approve the use in buildings on a site. They ensure a proposal conforms to the land use bylaw and other planning documents. In Strathmore, the majority of our development permits have conditions on them. Those conditions put specific controls over the use of buildings on the site and range from setbacks to landscaping. Applicants are allowed to ask for variances from the land use bylaw. Typically, administration deals with these internally. However, if a variance request exceeds 25% in certain instances, it must be referred to council. So administration circulates various, variance requests to adjacent landowners. For us, this means that parcels that are within 50 meters of the subject parcel, and to relevant external and internal departments, or external agencies and internal departments. Any comments that we receive from these three groups are taken into consideration. They do not dictate the decision, but may inform it. Development permits that go to council have a non-statutory public hearing. This just means that those deemed affected by the application may submit a comment in writing, and they may attend the council meeting to present their comments, if they wish. When issuing a decision on a development permit, sound planning reason must be given regardless if the application is refused or approved. So what this means is that sound planning reason for approvals is a lot easier to give. It aligns with the land use bylaw, it's as simple as that. Refusals may be a little bit trickier, so it could be something as simple as it doesn't align with the land use, it doesn't align with the land use bylaw, rather. However, for variance requests, it's better to practice, it's, it's best practice to include additional reasons, so it doesn't align with the land use bylaw, and it encroaches into the utility right-of-way. Or it doesn't align with the land use bylaw, and it would impact stormwater infrastructure, just for example. So when we do present the development permit to council, the application, comments, a report discussing the application, and the recommendation will be given to council to review. If the recommendation is to approve the application, administration provides a development permit with recommended conditions. To facilitate this, this discussion, we've put together a sample development permit, and then we'll just go over it with you folks right now. So at the top of the DP, or development permit, there's the technical information there. So when a decision was made, when the appeal period lapses, and whether there's off-site levies owed, et cetera, that kind of thing. Past, it'd be easier if I have, hopefully you can see that. So that's the next bit there. So that line just says whether the application has been approved or refused. Next, we have, oh goodness, the conditions. So we've got two sets. We have prior to release, and then we have the normal conditions. So the prior to release conditions are conditions that have to be met prior to groundbreaking. So these are items that are required to complete an application, so to speak, but do not necessarily have impact on the decision itself. So the most common prior to release conditions we have are about obtaining quotes for landscaping, signing of development agreements, obtaining securities and fees, that kind of thing. The next set of conditions are the typical ones. So defining what the use or the buildings are that have been approved, whether there's a variance that's been granted. So you can see an example here, a variance of 6 meters was given to this house. And what, and what that variance is, whether there's any landscaping required, and then, of course, tying the development permit to the supplied plans, just to name a couple of conditions. The final section of the development permit that we have is the note section. So these are just comments that we add to a development permit that aren't appropriate to include as conditions, but are important information for either future development officers, for the person receiving the permit. So the, this one, for example, it shows that the recipient, that reminds them they need to get their safety code permits, that they may need additional development permits for any other development on site, and that the development permit does have an expiry date of 12 months if the development doesn't start. So we will be bringing that development permit application to council on November 2nd. You'll have an opportunity to add or remove conditions to the development permit. We will help you draft them and discuss the implications if there are any requested changes. That does conclude my presentation, and I will happily answer any questions.
So if you build a deck with your new home construction, you're fine, but if you build it after the fact, you have to take out another permit?
So long as the development permit application includes that deck, then what we would do is we would say house and deck on the development permit.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, if the development appeal board turns down the application, where does the applicant go? We used to have a development appeal board, but I don't think we have that anymore. Oh, do we? And what happens if a development agreement lapses?
The agreement or the permit?
Well, is the agreement not part of the permit?
Sometimes.
So if the developer doesn't complete by such-and-such a date, the developer's agreement lapses, do they have to reapply? Does the town have any recourse to get them to complete?
I can, through the chair, typically, the permit itself can lapse after a certain, I believe it's between two and three years, right, Megan? They have one year to start and then two years to finish, typically. Sometimes developers will ask for an extension of that time, and if we feel like they're making progress, we would, we would do that.
Pardon me, pardon me, sorry, we've just lost the mayor, we may just need to pause for a second here.
So we have a motion to recess just for five minutes? If we could have a vote on the motion? All in favor? And that is carried.